Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to welcome everyone. Let's have our call to order, please. Roll call we just had. Let's stand and Mr. Garrison, Ms. Ward will lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the opportunity of serving this great county. We thank you, Father, for the way you have blessed us here in Pitt County, and we pray, Father, that we might always honor you and serve you. We thank you, Father, for each citizen that is here this evening, each one that is viewing us by way of television. We pray that you might bless each one of them. Be with us as a board as we work together this evening and conduct the business of our county. We pray that everything we do will honor and glorify you and will be for the best result of the citizens that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Can we face the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Motion for approval.
Second. All right, let's vote. All right, Mr. Manager, next order for you.
You have a public hearing tonight, Gladden Forest Equity, and we have James Rhodes, planning director, will present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the manager just mentioned, we have one public hearing for rezoning request tonight. It is for Gladden Forest Equity. This particular site that's under consideration is located near the Belvoir crossroads. It's actually one lot removed from that on NC 33 West, and it's just east of its intersection with Porter Road and NC 222. The land use plan shows it as a commercial crossroads area. On your screen, you can see the exact location. It is a portion about a little bit better than two acres of the entire tract here that's bounded in the bold black line. The subject property is here, just east of the primary intersection of Belvoir. The area, as far as our land use plan is concerned, you can see just about the entire area that we're dealing with, just a small area on the back portion. It's just outside the commercial crossroad community area, and as we'll discuss a little bit later, it is in concurrence with our land use plan with the proposed rezoning to general commercial. The community crossroad, or commercial crossroad community, this is a relatively new portion in our land use plan when we updated it last time, and it recognizes these more major-type crossroad communities in the county such as Blackjack or Belvoir, and it is for mix of uses. And as you can see already with this existing land use map that's on the screen, we already have quite a few different mix of uses there, ranging from, of course, the fire department here, some residential, commercial areas, a church that's deemed as institutional, and also in some industrial areas. So this does, is pretty much a logical extension of some of those uses. The zoning there, as you can see, right at the crossroad proper, is primarily general commercial, and this again would be just an extension of that GC or general commercial designation. That particular zoning district, as described in our zoning ordinance, is intended to accommodate a range of retail service office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities for such development. And through our review, we do believe that it is consistent with our land use plan, and staff is recommending approval, as did the planning board at its meeting when it was held last month. So with that, we are recommending approval of this rezoning from rural residential to general commercial, and to advise that the request is reasonable and within the best and within public interest, and is consistent with our land use plan. Ready for the public hearing.
Thank you, James. I declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone that desires to speak for or against this issue?
Mr. Chairman, you have two people signed up. First person is Matt Louder. If he'll come forward, please, and give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Matt Louder. I'm an engineer with Triangle Site Design, and I am representing the property owner as well as the proposed developer for this tract, and would just be glad to answer any questions you might have about the property and the proposed use for it.
Did Mr. Rhodes answer your questions, or you got some of this gentleman? If not, next?
Next we have, looks like Justin Mullerby, possibly, with Aldridge and Sutherland.
Good evening. My name is Justin Mularkey, and I'm on behalf of the property owner and the developer, just to hear, answer any questions that you all may have of me.
Any questions? If not, we'll go to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's two other people signed up. I believe they're, they're under the rezoning list. I think they're for other public addresses to the board.
Just to follow up what the manager said, is there anyone that needs to speak for or against this proposal that Mr. Rhodes just presented? There being none, as I see, declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure to vote?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you.
All right, let's next, man.
Next is public addresses to the board, and we have two people signed up tonight. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Keith Cooper?
Come around, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very, very quickly. I wanted to say something else, a few more things about human relations. We've been dealing with this issue since 1999, and I really want to urge all of you, please, to be, take this thing seriously and not play games. We hear a lot of talk about transparency. When Calvin Mercer was running for city council at large position, he talked a lot about transparency, and his opponent talked about transparency, Mr. Mitchell. So we would like to see transparency on this board as well. It's very, very important. Now, I've, I've heard some individuals to say, the last time that we spoke, for human relations, that we only had 10 people in the audience. I believe the Della Reflector made mention that 10 folks showed up. Don't let those numbers fool you, you know, because a lot of times we, we have this crunch for the numbers. Just like you guys represent various districts, all of your constituents are not here either, but that doesn't mean that they don't support you, or support your interests or your positions. So we have thousands and thousands of people who support our positions. Look at what the town of Winnebago did. They passed a resolution to support us. Look at the people that they represent, thousands and thousands of people. Same thing with the town of Fountain. The village of Simpson would have done the same thing today, but David Board, the mayor, said he couldn't even get a quorum. He couldn't even get his folks to show up for a darn meeting. So he had to cancel the meeting in Simpson today, you know, and then we looking for the same kind of thing in Grimes and so forth and so on. And so it's very, very important. We have a great deal of support from citizens. I had a conversation recently with Mr. Garrison at K&amp;W Cafeteria outside K&amp;W, and Commissioner Garrison told me that he supports human relations, but he doesn't support a human relations council. I almost fell on my face in laughter. What do you mean by that? Now, how can you support human relations and not support a human relations council? That's just like saying, I think that every able-bodied male ought to be gainfully employed, but I don't support the Employment Security Commission. Or, I love vanilla ice cream, but I'm not going to the ice cream social. Well, if you love vanilla ice cream, go to the darn social, eat as much as you want, have a great time. So sometimes we say something out of one side of our mouth, and we say something slightly different out of the other side of our mouth. That's why transparency and accountability are very, very important. So let's stop wasting time with this issue. Let's bring it to a vote, and let's do what the people want, and let's pass this thing in the best interest of everybody. One quick point. I heard a rumor that the county manager might be requesting a pay increase at some point soon. Let me ask that, if you consider a pay increase for the county manager, also consider all the other county employees. They should simultaneously receive a pay increase during these difficult economic, financial times. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Cooper. Anybody else?
Angela Cooper?
No, wait a second. Mr. Garrison, did you want?
Mr. Chairman, I feel like since Mr. Cooper called out my name, I need to respond to what he said. He said that I said that I supported human relations, but I did not support a human relations council. That is not what I said. I said that I support human relations as much as anybody in this county, but that does not necessarily mean that I support a human relations council, and I stand by that. As far as these thousands of people, they are not calling me. But anyway, I felt like I needed to respond since he addressed me specifically.
Very good, Mr. Garrison. Yes, ma'am.
And I thank you that you did. You know what? Sometimes, and let me be honest with you.
Let's go back and start over.
My name is Angela Cooper from Greenville, North Carolina.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
And I want to follow up on what Mr. Cooper has said, and I'll try doing it in three minutes or less. I can relate to what he's saying. I spoke to Melvin McLauren a couple, was it, a couple weeks ago, when we were over the phone. Sometimes we say one thing in public, we have a little public, little conversations, then we have something in private. You're one way in public, you're one way in private. I figured that that's being a politician, so please forgive me for addressing that way. If you're going to be consistent, be consistent, okay? And I understand what you're saying. You still said the same thing, no matter how you worded it, in country language, I said the same thing, the same darn thing, so same thing. Okay, same thing with Mr. Scott Elliott. You met, you had a meeting recently. Mr. Troy, Mr. Cooper wasn't invited. You called him, wanted the man to come back. Sometimes we have these little meetings. You say one thing, you do something else. Be consistent. Let your word be true. If you're going to tell us one thing, don't get in public and say something else. Be honest. I love you all, God bless you all, but I'm just saying, be, be direct. Say what you mean, mean what you say. Other thing, we had a mass feeding. We fed over 400 people. That was wonderful on May the 6th. I got this, we were working with Mildred Council, and she's been wonderful to support the North Carolina Sterilization Compensation Program. And this is with the UNC, the Center for UNC's Law, was a pro bono program, and claims had to be filed by the commission by June 30th. They have two information sessions, and they will be conducted in Pitt County on May 21st and June 21st to locate victims or their families, family members, and offer assistance to filing claims. This is for African-Americans. This is from the year, the late 1950s, a number of American victims rose considerably for sterilization. What else? She said, Mildred, I believe you said a couple other things. This is for Pitt County residents between 1946 and 1968, which were the peak years of the program. This is nearly 142 sterilizations were perpetrated on Pitt County residents between these years. That's 1946 and 1968, and they're trying to locate these victims. So if you know of anyone who should recover compensation under North Carolina Sterilization Comp Program, please have them contact, this phone number is 919-445-0176. It's important because the information sessions are on May 21st and June 21st of this year, and the deadline for filing these claims is June 30th. So if you know of any senior citizens who, who took part in this, who were sterilized, then please, this is for African-Americans in Pitt County, I thank you for your time. I know sometimes we get offended by things. Please forgive us for being direct, but the thing is, say what you mean, mean what you say. Don't tell us in private, and then you come out in public and do something else. And I understand about the whole raise issue. Sometimes with the change in dynamics of this board, things could happen, anything could happen, but just, just be real with the general public. If you're not going to do something, just say you're not going to do it. And God bless you. And I want to thank Mr. James for his service, and he's not here tonight, but he's been wonderful. I met him last time I was here, and I enjoyed talking to him. So God bless you all.
Next, Mr. Manager.
Next is the county manager's report, Mr. Chairman, under item A. Your next meeting dates, two weeks from today, will be June the 2nd, will be your regular meeting at 9:00 AM. Please keep in mind, on the next day, on June the 3rd, which is Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, you will have two public hearings here in the commissioners' auditorium. The first will be concerning the proposed canine control ordinance, and the second will be about your operating budget for fiscal year 1415. Then on June the 16th, at 6:00 PM, would be your second regular meeting of the month on the third Monday. I want to remind the board on item B, concerning County Assembly Day, is put on by the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. This will be on May the 28th, and basically an all-day event in Raleigh at the General Assembly. Item C, just want to make a brief mention, the Pitt County Fire Association has been in contact with the emergency management staff for quite some time, and we've been talking, discussing about them having a liaison from the Board of Commissioners to the Fire Association. We are awaiting a formal request in writing from them, but in case you've heard anything about that, we have been continuing talks with them, and we'll bring that to you as soon as we have that formal request from them. There's no issues or problem with it. Just wanted you to be aware that would be coming in the future. Had two other items, actually three other items. One is just a quick follow-up regarding the legislative breakfast that was held with our local legislative delegation a couple weeks back, and from that, a couple things have, legislative matters have arisen. One dealing with the governor's proposed budget. The, what we're seeing is the two proposals for the schools, and one deals with workers' comp and one deals with tort claims, is being proposed, actually by the governor in his budget for next year, that the school system pay all workers' comp claims from non-state funds. So that would mean county dollars, current expense dollars. Basically, it reads, "Local Boards of Education shall pay all workers' compensation claims arising from events occurring after July 1st, 2014, for school employees regardless of the portions of employee salary paid from state funds." So in essence, county government would be responsible for all claims for state employees paid by local dollars. The second item kind of really goes with that, tort claims, basically saying again that no state funds or non-state funds would be, would be, have to be, any claims would have to be paid after July 1st, 2014, again, reading as, "Local Boards of Education shall assume liability for all tort claims arising from events occurring after that date." These are two things that really concern us as a county government, as a unit of the local government, and that we feel we'll need to be speaking with our local delegation, the NCACC, as well as the entire General Assembly on that, because that is two unfunded mandates that we do not feel need to be pushed onto county government. Had a couple other things, one dealing with the Greenville Board of Adjustment. As you are aware, Pitt County appoints members to the Greenville Board of Adjustment. There's changes being proposed to this, and let me just kind of read through this to, so you'll understand it. The Board of Adjustment for Greenville, again, this is the Greenville's Board of Adjustment, you have ETJ representatives on that, that Board of Adjustment. Currently, a seven-member board with three alternates. Five of these seven members are city residents, and two of them are ETJ residents, and then there's U-point-one of the three alternates. If you can follow the, the numbers there.
Two ETJ and one alternate.
Right. So seven members, three alternates. Of the seven, five are city residents, two are ETJ people, and then you have three alternates sitting over here in case somebody can't attend a meeting, and of those three, you appoint one. Greenville is proposing to convert one of the county's two appointees to a city appointee, a current one. They're saying, due to a lack of interest of people who live in the ETJ, and despite our efforts at advertising, that we've been unable to fill one of the county ETJ positions, as well as the county alternate position, for about a year. It's been, it's been vacant. The law requires a certain number of representatives from the ETJ beyond the city board of adjustment. The number is determined by formula in statute based upon population. Based upon the current population of Greenville, technically, we'd only need one ETJ appointee. So Greenville's looking at reducing the number of, I guess, the county's two appointments to, to one. And this is going to be discussed by the city council coming up, but we wanted you to be aware that this is going on. As staff, we've talked about this informally, Janice, myself, James, and do not see an issue with this. You'll still have a representative on there, and it shouldn't be an issue. Janice, you want to add anything to that?
No, only that the current population figures support one appointment, and in addition, Greenville's retaining the alternate appointment by the county. So, so the county would retain one regular member, one alternate member, and then the position that's been vacant for, actually, almost up to two years now, would become a city appointee to help avoid the quorum issues that they've been having. We still will have a voice proportionate to what the general statutes allow us to have.
Thank you.
Could I, do we have someone in that position now, or is there just one vacant?
We have one regular member appointed. That's Linda Rich. You have one vacant and one vacant alternate. So we'll need to come back to appoint that alternate, even if the regular position is eliminated.
One other item, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to give an update regarding the, the motion that was made on April 21st regarding the proposed Human Relations Commission, and I believe the motion had talked about that matter coming back to you as a board within 30 days. I did talk to the chairman, and we had it on the agenda, but decided to continue it till June the 2nd. The, there's a suggestion was made that, that Gene Troy from the North Carolina State Human Relations come down and make a presentation regarding the state's viewpoints on human relations commissions, and basically, Mr. Troy did come down, present to myself, as well as the county attorney, as well as the human resources director, and the audience was my choice to have it staff-driven, because the, the motion was for me to investigate the, the data and the, the cost of bringing a recommendation back to you regarding human relations council. There's nothing more to it than that. The, what is, what was suggested is that Mr. Troy come before the Board of Commissioners and make a, a version of his, his presentation via PowerPoint. I guess based upon what was presented tonight via a commission, I would like to know the board's wishes, if you would like Mr. Troy to come in and make this presentation to you. There was some concern about state employees that are not able to travel in the month of June due to budget freezes. He didn't know if he could get here in June, maybe July, but even a lot of that, I guess I'm seeking the board's direction as to whether you would like Mr. Gene Troy to come in, or whether you would just like me to come back and render a recommendation based upon what, what knowledge I have on the subject.
I think you can come back to us if, if it'd be my feeling. I don't know about the other members of the board.
I agree, because they, the committee heard, the leadership committee heard from you, so.
Okay. So ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Tom, I believe you wanted to...
On a previous issue, the Board of Adjustment, or not Board of Adjustment, I mean, the, the ETJ appointee, what about having a member of the county commission if we are in, in the ETJ? Could we sit that position? When do they meet?
How about doing the alternate, and then you can step in?
Because if it's nighttime, I'll take the position.
They do, they do meet at night.
Tom, why don't we let the, the manager check that, but I don't have anything against that.
I'd love to be on that board. I got a lot to say. I do. I live in the ETJ, and I see a lot of stuff that I'd like to comment on.
Did you hear me, Tom?
Yeah, I heard you.
All right. Okay. You, you come back and give us the dates and times on that, because we need to put it back on anyway, don't we?
7:00 PM on the fourth Thursday each month, except in November and December.
That meet with you, Tom?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, what's next?
Next is a, your April 2014 question report.
The Pitt County fiscal year-to-date combined collection rate for current-year taxes on real and personal property as well as registered motor vehicles is 97.27, an increase compared to the rate one year ago of 96.46. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes, including bank attachments, wage garnishments, sheriff levies, rent levies, North Carolina debt set-off program, and interim foreclosure.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this move?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Alice King going to be the presenter on this next item? Who is she?
[laughing]
Hey, Alice, how you doing?
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner Owens and Commissioners. We came to bring you good news tonight.
Thank you, babe.
We've been honored to have two special friends and colleagues with us here in Pitt County today, and we're excited that they will be addressing you this evening. We introduce to you the president and executive director of North Carolina Senior Games, Brad Allen, and the chair of our Board of Directors, Jack Duncan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I am Brad Allen. I'm the president and executive director of North Carolina Senior Games, and this is the 30th anniversary of Senior Games State Finals. And because of that, we look back at 30 years of healthy aging in this state as the largest senior Olympic program in these United States. 30 years ago, it was a tiny grain that was an idea that was partially begun here in Pitt County under the leadership of Alice Keen at Community Schools and Recreation. Rita Roy continues that excellent tradition, and we know that over time, as we celebrate 30 years, a pearl is the thing that we commemorate 30 years with. A tiny dot becomes a pearl, and now, 30 years later, Pitt County is truly one of the pearls of this state. You were the very first county that we have visited because you were there at the very beginning. You have contributed to this program and to the betterment of the health status of older persons in this state. I would like to introduce Jack Duncan, the chair of the Senior Games Board of Directors, who will continue our comments. But thank you, Pitt County.
Thank you.
To tell you, you know this, but Alice is our pearl.
Here, here, and ours as well, sir.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, it's really a pleasure to be here before you. As Brad has indicated, we, we're sort of on our thank you tour of the state. We're present in all 100 counties in North Carolina. We have over 60,000 participants, many of whom have been with us for decades, many of them from Pitt County. It's a real opportunity. We have been today to, the high school.
DH Conley.
I'm having one of those senior moments. To DH Conley today, where we met over 100 young people who are participants in their junior ROTC program. What a bunch of good kids. We look at them, and we see all that they do. They have participated with us from the very beginning. They have been part of our program and have been part of Senior Games State Finals that occurs each year in Raleigh. It's folks like that, the intergenerational interaction that occurs between all those senior citizens who come to participate in Senior Games either at the local level, across the state, or who come to Raleigh for the state finals once a year. To be around those young people, to see them, it just does your heart good. And I told those young people that when we see them, I think of my own children and my grandchildren, you know, living a life that is so good, that is so full of character, and that is so driven to do the right thing. That's just one example of the kind of folks that we like to interact with, and we really appreciate what you have done for us and with us, and will continue to do with us over these past 30 years and for decades to come as we continue to grow. I won't take any more time, Mr. Chairman, but sincerely, we thank you for everything you've done, for all the support that we've had from all the different entities in county government. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, both of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alice? All right. Blaine?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Beginning on page 24 of your agenda packet is your monthly financial report for the month ending April 30th, 2014. Pleased to report that revenues have been collected at a rate of 91.8%, and expenditures have been spent at a rate of 86.8%. Again, this is very similar to our earning and spending pattern in the previous fiscal year, and based on our performance through April, we do anticipate coming in end-of-year fund balance within that 18 to 20% range that we talked about during the budget workshops. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Not? Let's vote. Not, let's vote. All right, Mr. Elliott, I believe you're next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next item, this is going to be a review and update regarding the county's Performance, Performance Measurements Enhancements Project. If Katie Martunick would come up, I'm not sure if I pronounced your name right. I slaughtered every time. Why don't you give it to us?
It's tricky. My name is Katie Martunick.
Thank you. Katie is a intern, graduate intern with us who's actually now graduated, graduated a week or two ago from UNC, from the NPA Master's of Public Administration Program there at UNC. She's been helping us this year on various projects. The, probably the most Keystone, cornerstone project would be researching our performance measurement, what we've done in, in years past and what we currently do, and asking some probing questions as to why do we do what we do and why do we collect the widgets we collect and how we use them. And we've really have, with her assistance, have kind of turned this whole thing upside down, and I've asked her to make a presentation regarding what she's done during her time with us.
Thank you, Manager Elliott. As Scott said, I've been working on several projects with the manager's office and the finance department, and tonight I'm going to talk to you about the Performance Management System Evaluation. I'll go over how the project has progressed and then what we hope to achieve with some of the changes that we'd like to make. To give you a little bit of context for what I'm talking about when I say performance management or performance measures, you're probably most familiar with the scorecard that the finance department puts together for you guys. This is actually only a fraction of the comprehensive report that's a little bit bigger, and this includes all of the measures for each department in the county. It includes measures from Veteran Services, every department, Emergency Management, every department in the county. And it's, as you can tell, kind of thick. So I was asked to evaluate every measure in the book, and I'll go through a little bit about what I did and, and the changes we'd like to make. So first off, performance measures in general should be a decision-making tool. The primary focus is for them to help departments make decisions on, on their operations and then to help them kind of improve their service provisions as well. So it can be an internal decision-making tool, and it can also help them externally. We'd really like to see them help departments identify areas of success, areas where they might be able to make improvements. They should be relevant to their priorities, their current priorities, and we'd like to see them help increase transparency as well, both to you guys and to the public. The way this project was set up, I did a little bit of research. I talked to several different counties and got some firsthand accounts from Catawba County, Rockingham County, as well as Fairfax County, Virginia, to talk to them about how they use their systems. And I also looked individually at some of the measures that they used to see how we could improve the ones in Pitt County. I evaluated the measures here in each department, made some recommendations, and then I actually met with each department head to talk about what their priorities were departmentally, and then also if they had any constraints, whether it was feasible for them to measure certain things, whether that was data that they had or the technology, if they had the technology to track certain things. The great thing about this was after I went through all these three different steps, when I met with the department heads, they were really receptive of kind of some of the goals that the best practices outlined. They were really positive about, so these three following things. They really were happy to talk about how to make their measures better, to make them more valuable. They want to measure things that are useful to them. They want to measure fewer things, which is actually really recommended. As you can tell, the book here is a little overwhelming. It's pretty dense, and really measuring more isn't necessarily measuring better. If you're overwhelmed with information, it kind of loses its punch. And so the departments were interested in focusing a lot more of their time and effort on fewer measures to make them really good. And then lastly, measures that are dynamic. It's really important to review these every so often to make sure that they're relevant to what you're doing and to also make sure that they're actually accurate. So as an example of some of the things that we're actually trying to avoid, we looked at workload measures, which some might call accounting widgets. Some examples of these might just be looking at the number of calls received, or the number of meetings you've attended, trainings held, that kind of thing. Those things are all important, but they're more the standard procedure. They're, they're your standard everyday work operations. They're, they're kind of just you meeting the demand of your job. This doesn't really measure how well you're doing your job or how efficient you might be doing your job. So in looking through some of these, looking through this document, we really tried, I tried to talk through each department head about which of these were really important. Some are worth holding on to, but a lot of times, we really wanted to kind of move these out of the way and start with something different. The two main things we decided to focus on were things that showed effectiveness, how effective a service was or a program, and then how efficient a service or a program was. So an example of effectiveness measure is, this one comes from Soil and Water. We added a new measure about the percent of sites that install conservation practices that receive a follow-up visit. So Soil and Water is interested in being a little bit more diligent in providing follow-up visits after they install new farming practices to ensure that, you know, any questions are answered, or to make sure that the farmer's comfortable with the, the way it was installed the first time around and that there aren't any issues, to improve their service quality. So this is an example of a strong effectiveness measure. Another example comes from Pitt County Transit. They've talked about maybe looking at who are first-time riders, not just the number of users in general, but the percent of their users, the percent of their service users who are actually coming for the first time. This will help them look at how effective their educational efforts are. Are they reaching new people? Are more people learning about their service that didn't know about it beforehand? And it helps them see if they're targeting the right audience. And then an example of an efficiency measure actually comes from the Planning Department. They'd like to look at the percent of inspection costs that are offset by permit fees. If, if it's an apartment that can generate some of their own revenue, I think this is something to be proud of and something definitely worth keeping an eye on. It can help you figure out whether an adjustment, adjustment needs to be made and help you see how self-sufficient your department might be if you have that option of generating revenue. So as I mentioned before, we'd really like to see these changes that are hopefully going to be made as we trim the number of measures, as we make these measures more valuable and useful to departments, and as we make, create measures that are dynamic and relevant every single year for the departments. Keeping them relevant and keeping them valuable will really allow departments to improve their decision-making so that they can improve service quality, make sure that their operations are efficient, and as well as include tran-, improve transparency with you all and with the public. I think this provides a great opportunity for departments to tell their story, for the public to understand a little bit more about what local government does, and for them to really highlight successes in their department and where they're really shining. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Manager, do you want to critique this?
No, I'd say she's, her work is reflective of her presentation here today. She's done excellent work. So we really like the, the direction the performance measurement is moving, and we have still work to do, additional follow-up to do with departments, but the lion's share of the research and setting the, the foundation framework for, of this is, has been laid, and we thank you, Katie, for her work.
You didn't say which UNC.
Chapel Hill.
I think we're moving in the right direction here. I, I agree with her on that, the performance report. I get that, and it is a little overwhelming, and if we can focus on streamlining that, it will be of more value to me, and I will pay a little bit more attention to it and read the details more.
Thank you, Katie. Any other, Beth, Mr. James?
The thing that I like about any kind of performance evaluation that you're using, there's so much room to grow and improve and then make additional changes in the future to make it get even broader and do the job better. And I, and, and any kind of an evaluation that you have to do if you are in a leadership position, when the list is so long, you just lose yourself in the, when it's very clear to the people who are being evaluated, and very clear and concise to the people who are doing the evaluation, it's so much easier, and I see this, and efficiency and effectiveness, that's what we want. Thank you very much.
Mr. James?
Yes, I was very interested when you said the planning department, the inspection fees. That's one of the big complaints that I get. We have upped those fees several times. What did you find out? You said you were going to know, or he will know, by keeping these records. Are we making money? Can we lower the fees? Is what I guess I am, because the fees are high on some of them.
So I've just talked to the different departments about brainstorming new things to measure. We haven't actually started, we haven't implemented the new measures yet, so hopefully you'll find that out in the future.
So the planning department, they could lower the fee.
Well, Mr. James, our, our goal has been to cover our costs, not necessarily to make money. And we've compared ourselves to our comparable counties to make sure we're not charging more, counties and other jurisdictions, to make sure those inspection fees don't exceed what those areas are paying.
And I, I know that, and I supported that, but at the same time, as we raise those fees, you know, you can keep bumping them up, and you're making more money than what it really costs for you to go out there. And you know we've had to, we've got extra, we don't have the business we had five years ago. We know that. So therefore, you don't have as many employees, I hope, Mr. Manager.
No, sir, we do not. We definitely do not.
All right, that's, that's...
Neither in the permitting center nor the number of inspectors.
So we're looking for our planning director to let us know how, what you found out.
And hopefully that measure will illustrate how that ratio falls.
Okay, that's good. I like that.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I got one. I'd just like to make a statement. If we're going to do that, then are we going to pick on the register of dates? We make a lot, a bunch of money off that. Are we going to cut that to the bone to where we just break even?
No, I'm, no, no, I, but we have been upping those fees, I would.
They've been increased.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
I mean, if you're going to do it one place, you can do it everywhere.
Let's see. Janice, are you next? Rwanda?
Yes, is Wanda not here? I'll, um...
How about, can you handle it? Do you want me to skip over?
No, we can go right through it. The North Carolina Eastern Region, this board has considered previously an economic development incentive loan for a local company. This is phase one of that transaction where the county would receive from the Eastern Region $495,000. And in order for that to happen, this board must approve the document, that is, documents that are contained in your agenda package, one being a resolution which finds that this is a legitimate economic development purpose, that we request the money from the North Carolina Eastern Region. Remember, these are monies that our citizens have paid into this fund that we're getting back because of the restructure of the Eastern Region, and that we be authorized to use them for an appropriate economic development purpose. The second document is an intergovernmental agency agreement and contract the state will require the county to sign, which requires repayment at zero interest. If you approve both of those, then we can move forward with that economic development incentive.
Do we have a motion for those three items?
Motion to approve.
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Not, let's vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, that was your last vote, and if you'll vote for this one now, if you, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, who's got the next one?
John Demery, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here, Carolina Railway has requested to lease approximately three and a half acres of property at the back of the landfill to offload agricultural lime from rail cars to trucks to, to, to market it. We've gone through extensive study, talked to a number of state and federal agencies. We had to go through a rezoning request with, with the city. That was approved last week. Everything has moved forward as, as we expected. Now and before you to ask that we sign a lease agreement. This potentially could be a very good revenue source for solid waste. I'm estimating between $50,000 and $100,000. What right now the lease agreement will be for every, we charge them $25 for every rail car that comes in, and then they will, they are wanting to scale out the trucks as they leave, and we'll charge $7 per truck. This is, the lime process is usually, happens twice a year during the spring and during the fall. We, we're at the end of the spring timeline, but there's some other things that potentially could come with this lease agreement, other items that they could transload at our facility. If you see on your map, the area that we're looking to lease is in the back of the landfill, and it's about three, three and a half to four acres. It's the area etched in blue, and we'd like to get approval to, to lease them the property.
Johnny, it is a margin volume between $50,000 and $100,000. Is that based on the volume of, of weight that goes through?
Yes, sir, I'm trying to be conservative. I'm trying to be conservative.
Most pleasurable of the...
I think it's a great idea and without a lot of effort on our part, and a possibility for you all to get some more money to keep the land going on.
Second? All right, any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Let, let me ask you one or two. Are this a...
You're too late, Mr. James.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm getting...
Yes, sir.
All right, and what companies are involved in it?
Um, the only company that I'm aware of is Coastal Railway.
Oh, but you don't know why, though?
I, I don't, I'm not involved in where they're, where they're selling it, um, to the agriculture companies.
That's, that's all right, I'm very familiar with that, and I support it very strongly.
If, if you've been on 14th Street, you've probably seen that pile right there. That's going to be back here.
Thank you. Noel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Coming before you tonight with an agenda item, asking if you will consider to help Grifton Community Fire Association get their driveway paved. Grifton Community Fire Association recently built a fire substation located on Stokes Town, St. John's Road, near NC 118, and has requested assistance from North Carolina DOT in the pavement of the driveway. Used to, we would make contact with North Carolina DOT and, and fire department. They then would work to get that accomplished. That has now changed to where DOT now requires the county to be a part of the agreement, and will provide funds up to $25,000 towards this project if the project is completed to their requirements. You have two agreements that was attached to your agenda. One was the agreement between the county and North Carolina DOT, and the second one being between the county and Grifton Community Fire Association. We have worked with our legal staff and our engineer, they're looking at that, and this is what they both have agreed upon, and so tonight I'm asking if you would to approve both these two agreements.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have been doing, helping each fire department over the years, many years. Therefore, I move that we sign the two agreements pertaining to the Grifton Fire Department.
Motion made, second? Any discussion? Not, let's vote. Okay, who's next? Mark Sheriff or John? Or both?
I apologize for delay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioner. Wanted to talk with you about the domestic violence fatality review team proposal we have for you tonight. First, I'd like to go through a quick overview of the legislation real quick of the session law from 2013. This session law reauthorizes the Mecklenburg County Fatality Review Team. Mecklenburg County started a fatality review team for domestic violence back in 2009. They were the first county within the state to do this. Pitt County and, and those of us, not just in law enforcement, criminal justice system, but other allied professionals have been discussing this issue for years and years, but Mecklenburg was able to establish one. We reached out to them. Their initial fatality review team was set up with a sunset. They were going back before the legislature this year. We approached them to see if we could be added on, Pitt County could, to be one of two. It would have been Pitt and Alamance County to be added to a local bill to follow their own governing rules. And that passed this past session. It made some minor changes to the composition of teams, which I'll get into in just a second. Again, I've already discussed the sunset provision and talks about requirements for reporting both to the Board of County Commissioners, the Domestic Violence Commission, State Commission, and the Governor's Crime Commission. But I wanted to talk to you about why this is really important to us locally in this community and just give you a few statistics real quick. Depending on what studies you look at, we've seen anywhere from 14% to 16% of all homicides in this country related to domestic violence. I've been working in this field, I mean, for a long time since 1997 and what I've found is those numbers are awfully low with differences in reporting, but that's what's mostly published. We do know that back in 2008, North Carolina, the legislature required all law enforcement to report to the Department of Justice the number of homicides that occur in the context of domestic violence. And over a four-year trend from 2008 to 2011, 22% at least of those homicides were classified as domestic violence. In fact, if you look at 2012 of the overall numbers, which I do not have in this presentation, but just so you would know, one-fourth of all the deaths that occurred in this state in 2012 were related to domestic violence. And you can kind of see the trend here on the PowerPoint, breaking down the numbers. This is all public record. It's all required to be reported by the local law enforcement agencies in the state. What I want to share with you is during that same time period, outside the municipal limits, 54% of the homicides in our county over that four-year period was attributed to domestic violence. 54%. And that's quoting the statute 50B, which governs what we report as domestic violence, which would include even children of parents. If you back that out and just look at intimate partner, 31% of those homicides over the four-year period. So this has kind of been our impetus locally, not just within the criminal justice system, but all the members, allied professionals that we, we talk with around the county. And they've said, you know, we really need to kind of peel back the layers of the onion and, and look at this issue a little different than what we have in, in the past. And, and that's what brought up the idea of kind of piggybacking on Mecklenburg's legislation and trying to form, form run here. As you can see, this isn't just a criminal justice issue. This has membership and you have it in your pockets with actual names, but on the screen is the organizations that will be represented here for the fatality review team. And it really is our belief locally that, that our strength and has been for years are the, are the resources available and the partnerships that have already been established within this community to include the members of this, this board. Some of you going back a number of years have always been supportive and, and helpful with us on this issue. Just to give you a quick overview of the roles and responsibilities if you, you agree to have this established, we would have the ability to review domestic violence-related deaths, both homicides and suicides. This would facilitate communication along various agencies and organizations involved in domestic violence cases in hopes of preventing future fatalities. We would provide an annual report to the commissioners here, your board, the DV Commission and the Governor's Crime Commission. This would begin on June 15th of this year and every three years thereafter. What's really nice about this legislation, it provides members of the board or of the team with access to a lot of different records that I typically would not get in a criminal investigation that's protected by general statute. This would allow us to have access to medical records, hospital records maintained by, you know, both county and, and local agencies, so, you know, to carry out the purposes of this, this committee. We should be able to share all relevant information for official review team meetings only. There's four administrative meetings a year annually and during each one, you'll review one, one death. Before any case is addressed, it'll be cleared by the district attorney. There'll be no pending cases that will be reviewed. These will all be cases that are disposed of if they did have a criminal court component, although we do realize a number of the deaths that we have seen have been both murder suicides, so would not be going before the, the courts. They make recommendations based on information learned for system improvements and needed resources where gaps and deficiencies are found. So in a nutshell, it's, it's working it backwards from the homicide to see if there are any, any trends. There will be summary letters sent to agencies. I'll take the sheriff's office as an example. If there was an issue found, it would be, it would be addressed but not specific. It's, it's not a brow-beaten session. It's just identifying gaps in services and hoping that, that we can close those gaps. There is a immunity clause in the statute where we are able to share this information. We can't be subpoenaed. Things that are discussed within the review team meeting stays within the review team room and only a broad summary of issues that are found will, will be shared. And again, that's directly with the department heads. There'll be a statement available that people will sign acknowledging the confidentiality and they can't share information and they'd be subject to civil and/or criminal penalties as provided by the statute. Before I take any questions, I do want to share with you that we have looked at having the, and they have agreed, having the Center for Family Violence Prevention being the lead agency. They're our local nonprofit that works for victims of domestic violence here within our, our community. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Mr. Cash?
One observation that you've already raised is that those members of this team will really have to keep that information very confidential because they will be looking at some very sensitive data and I know that that will be emphasized. The other thing that I observed here, are you going to be able to assemble the team, review the data and come up with a recommendation by June the 15th? That's less than 30 days away.
We, we will not. And the reason, because of the delay, you may remember shortly after the, the Adams case down in Griffin, we came before the board and asked permission to apply and we were accepted as one of 12 locations from across the country to participate in the Domestic Violence Homicide Prevention Demonstration Initiative. And they asked during the evaluation period, which we are coming to a close on, that we not implement any new programs that may corrupt any of the data because we're really looking at, at drawing a baseline. But, but it's fine. We'll be able to draft a letter saying that we have come before the Board of Commissioners and it's been, been, been set and we'll go from there. It's not going to harm us in any way.
You've already anticipated that and got it. Good. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We approve.
I second it.
That having been done, Mr. Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that you, you mentioned that from 2008 into 2011, it was 54% of domestic violence here in Pitt County death. I guess my question is that have you determined as to the age group grouping, do we know the age grouping, younger adults versus older adults? As to what percentage of death, are we finding more people in the younger category versus the older category in terms of death?
Well, if you look at the difference from the 31% that's intimate partner to the better than 50%, a lot of that is because of deaths that, that happen for, for younger, younger children. I mean, by, by, by parents is what, what we've seen or caretakers as a, as a blade. So, but those are the type of things we'll be able to report back to y'all as we go, go forward and we start peeling back the layers of the onion. And we, we hope to have a member from the, the Mecklenburg County team come down and we're going to share training. They want to look at some of our supervised visitation or look at the supervised visitation here. We're going to try to barter and provide training on that and, you know, in exchange for training on the fatality review team. So that's already in the works too.
And you do, you do see this, in Pitt County, the domestic violence rate is increasing annually?
Oh, yes, sir. In fact, one of the most recent studies that I've seen, it talks about mass deaths and that 40% of all mass murders have a tie-in to domestic violence. I mean, if you look at the Newtown case, if that occurred in Pitt County, the first person that was killed was the mother. So that would actually be classified as a domestic case. And a couple of days later, in New York, where the firemen were, were murdered, his first, the first person killed, there was a live-in sister. And if you take the definition out of general statute 50B, both of those would be, would be domestics. And if we go way back to the DC sniper, you know, that case originated as a domestic violence case. Mildred Mohammed was his wife and it was sort of had a, a domestic violence component. So there's a lot of tie-ins to, to domestic violence and it's not just in Pitt County. It's across the state and country.
Thank you, John. Let's finish voting now. Everybody vote. Appreciate it.
Of course, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm sorry I didn't see you, Reverend.
Okay. John, would, would this, 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 this medical review team would not, would not interfere with the investigators doing their job, would it?
No, sir. We would not even touch a case till there's a final disposition. So everything would be closed and the district attorney would have to sign off that, that we're accepting it. So there would be, and she has a, an appointment on the board as well. You have that in your pocket for the membership and she would, she would give the blessing before we would proceed on anything. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Elliott, what's next?
Next, Mr. Chairman, you have the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. We have Annette Eubanks from the Mideast Commission to come and propose this creation of a new committee. This would be, I believe we have 46 different committees, 47, Kimberly? So this would be a new committee being proposed for a specific purpose. So, Ms. Eubanks?
Good evening. My name's Annette Eubanks. I'm the Mideast Commission Area Agency on Aging Director. And I come for you tonight to ask for the development of a block grant advisory committee in Pitt County. The Area Agency on Aging, we actually send funds down from the state level, from the federal level for services and home community care block grant services in Pitt County. We're asking for the development of this committee to assist with planning and coordination of the, of the block grant services. It's the intention to promote the visibility of aging programs at the local level. At this time, I actually act as the lead agency for Pitt County. I work really closely with the providers, which would be the Council on Aging, Creative Living, Senior Games, and DSS. So they're your providers in Pitt County. I work really closely with Scott Elliott as well on creating the funding formula and the plan and where, where the service is going to be put for that year. Some of the services that are actually provided in Pitt County under this funding are congregant and home-delivered meals, medical and general transportation, senior center operations, information and assistance, which is offered through your Council on Aging. A new one, it was actually just set up recently and I just got a call from the state that we're one of the few counties in the, in North Carolina in the past 12 years to have this program is the Housing and Home Improvement Service, which is going to be like modifications to your home for like grab bars or ramps or whatever along those lines. Senior Games is also provided under this and it's actually been in there for years, but they actually changed the standards a couple of years ago to where it had to be an evidence-based program. And fortunately enough, Senior Games fits in there and so Senior Games does receive funding for that through the Home Community Care Block Grant. You have in-home aid services and respite services and of course, adult day help through Creative Living. These are a few of the services that are actually offered in Pitt County. So what I'm asking for your assistance with is with the development of a committee that I could turn to and say, and meet quarterly and get some input on how the services are actually being run. How can we meet the demands of the client waiting list? It'd be a local, locally driven, so that would give me assistance with the providers. I've already got to the providers now, but to have some aging seniors, consumers, advocates on this committee as well. We would try to meet quarterly. Any questions?
Do we have a motion for this?
I'll move. Second.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion to approve Michael Brown to the oversight committee?
Second.
All right, let's vote. Health Board, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, sir. Page 105 of your agenda, reappoint Mr. Pitt County Board of Health. On this, you have, Board of Health is recommending that Faustina Dixon, Mark Hayes, and Porter Stokes be reappointed for three-year terms. Should they be reappointed, the terms will expire. Dixon's on September 1st, 2016, Hayes, October 1st, 2016, and Mr. Stokes on June 6th, 2016.
I second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, I believe we've had a request for a closed session. Madam Attorney, can you advise us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It has been suggested that this board go into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, sub-A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, and conditions of appointment or initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, and also under 143-318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential within the laws of this state and not considered a public record. With that, you'll just need a motion to enter the session.
Second.
Let's vote. Thank you.
Motion to go back into open session?
We are ready to, Mr. Hammond. Thank you. Mr. Webb, you got a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the minutes as to the content only for May 5th closed session.
Second.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Thank you. Ms. Ward, do you have a?
Yes, I do have a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we consider an increase as a 4% one-time bonus for our management team, which includes the manager, the two deputy managers, and the attorney. And that consideration based on past performance and the diligence to get us through some of these hard times. And we can add that we got our fund balance back up to where we had hoped to get it.
Second motion?
All right, in discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you. Any further business tonight?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's vote. Thank y'all. We appreciate it.